Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council, scheduled for this Monday, November 4th, is after 7:30 PM. If you would, please call the roll, and I will note that Mr. Ansel told me multiple times in multiple meetings he was not going to be here tonight.
You're still going to call his name.
You'd still have to call his name and mark him absent, but he did give us advance notice he was going to be here. Would call the roll, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Ansel, Mr. Bastancic?
Here.
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Silvestri?
Here.
Ms. Warden?
Here.
Despite Mr. Ansel's absence, we do have a quorum, and our agenda will remain as presented, and at this time, I would ask you to join the Worcester City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and access for all.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the October 21st, 2019 council meeting. Anyone would entertain a motion? I signed Mr. Silvestri, second by Mr. Myers. All in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The October 21st, 2019 council meeting minutes have been approved. Welcome, Mr. Mayor. I see you have some new things on our table today, so I'll be interested to hear your presentation.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bittendick. Yeah, this is sort of a fun night for us because we have a number of awards to inform council about and explain a little bit. So, I'll start off with one that I got to attend. The Heritage Ohio Annual Conference was a couple of weeks ago, just after our last council meeting, and our city was awarded the best downtown placemaking for a small community, for our downtown quad that we had done, and they presented us this plaque, and it was in the newspaper with talk about Millersburg and their Main Street Chair or Director winning the best award for a small community on that. So, it's very nice to have outside organizations that recognize the efforts that we're putting into our town here and saying that we are doing good things. So, with that, I'm going to pass it over to Joel briefly to talk about another award that he got to go and be a part of. Joel?
On each of your desks is a copy with the front, copy of the front cover of a magazine that's coming out here shortly, that's put out by the International City Management Association, and inside is the actual, I guess, poster that was displayed at that convention, explaining our project, was basically, we won a sustainability, community sustainability award for the operations down at our water resource recovery bioenergy facility because of our reuse, reuse of third-party waste, of the fact that we generate electricity for our water and wastewater plants, and then the end product is basically a soil enrichment, high-end Class A biosol, so there were views, it's got these awards, and we were recognized down there, and over about 5,500 attendees at that particular conference. This comes along after our water and wastewater staff had won, similarly for the operations for, I mean, Water Environment Federation, which is strictly, you know, facilities in the water and wastewater issue, but just for the city as a whole, for sustainability in that area. We were able to do the recognition.
Yep, so that's on a, really, an international level, so that is a very kind and prestigious award that we won at that agenda. So, carrying on, since we last met, Joel and myself and Jonathan Malley and Tom Pukas from WEDC and Miranda Keister from WEDC went and participated in what was called a mock site visit. So, if one of these companies looking for a new place to locate a factory or a business of some kind, all of a sudden gives us a quick cold call and says, well, we're going to come see your community in about two days and see what you guys can present for a business venture we're looking into. You have to react very quickly and you have to have things ready to go, so the state, Jobs Ohio from the state, is putting on these mock site visits to help people sort of practice how to get through that. So, we spent the whole day in Akron on Friday, and actually, it was, it was a very interesting and useful seminar that we went to, and they said we did actually very well in our trial mock visits. We learned quite a few things too, though, so, so good things there. Got a chance to tour the new AEP building, and I think they will be having more public tours here once the building is actually open. They had not moved yet, but a very nice facility, it's out straight across the street from Tech Four, off a long road, so, so like a regional facility, which will probably bring in more business in through the Worcester AEP office. So, our congratulations to them. The Worcester Chamber held the Wayne Economic Forum about a week ago, had four really good speakers, John Stitka locally from our Certified Angus Beef was one of them, and Attorney General David Yost was one of the speakers. The other was Jerry Grisco, who was President and CEO of Seabids, Professional Advising Service, and Bernie Moreno, who really was sort of a entrepreneur that has done well in life, and he talked about his ventures and how, how he ended up going. One more award to tell you about, and that is from the Chamber to one of our own. Ashley Hirschberger was recognized on Tuesday, October 22nd, as the Chamber Bright Star for the Chamber, nominated for a significant impact on the Chamber throughout her dedicated behind-the-scenes volunteering efforts in Worcester Young Professionals, Leadership Worcester and Worcester Fest. So, Ashley is a great team member of ours that does, does great things for our city, so I want to recognize her for that. And lastly, if you get the newspaper, you would have received one of these, this is our, about every half-year, community newspaper telling about what the city's doing. Lynn DePaulo is the master of putting this all together, along with all of our managers and Joel, in making this go together, but it helps people understand what we do as a city. So, if you haven't seen it, there's some extra copies as you leave out on the stand by the water cooler, so. And that's everything for this evening, we're here to help get through the meeting.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to one and all with the rewards, and I guess Ashley makes Mr. Baddick look, look good. All right, we do have one petition, a liquor permit petition. If you would please read the information on the notice.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, a permit request for Salsa Rita LLC, 150 West Liberty, Worcester, Ohio 44691. They're asking for a D5L permit. This is a restaurant that's going to be opening up in the old Gouda spot.
So, that would be for on-premises sales, then. And just a reminder, although you probably all can recite this as well as I can, we have a couple of options here, in terms of having a hearing here in Wayne County, having a hearing down in Columbus, and our third option is to waive having a hearing. So, what's your pleasure, council?
Move to waive hearing.
All right, motion to waive the hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the waiver of the hearing?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
All right, so if you would, Mr. Paul, let the Department of Liquor Control, we waive the hearing on this petition. Now, there's a lot of people here, but only two folks that have signed up to speak tonight. First one is Jason General, Jason General Worcester Anderson himself. So, if you want to come over here and make sure the microphone's on.
It's on.
It's supposedly on, and...
He's a teacher, he doesn't need one.
You know, state your name, address, although most of us here know who you are, and what you're here to speak on.
Absolutely. My name is Jason Anderson, I live at 573 Northwestern Avenue, here in our lovely city of Worcester. As President, Members of Council, I've had the great pleasure of addressing the importance of our city's namesake to you, this past summer, which was a great honor, mind me, to present that to you. As I look across this crowd this evening, I see members of the Wayne County Historical Society, the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Worcester City School District, and numerous other organizations, of whom I've had the other pleasure of presenting information on the man for whom our city is named. Since January, over a thousand individuals have heard of this particular gentleman, and as you know, right now, there is a petition for the city of Worcester to help fund this. There's a very large grant, which I will be hearing on on Friday, and I pray to God that that goes well, and with the proposal, the statue proponent of this project is complete, which I'm extremely excited about if that goes through, and I pray it does. I really, really want to stress to all of you, the importance of this being an educational project. I could not be more thrilled to have some of the Members of Council's support on this, but even more so to have the Worcester City Schools' support of this. Dr. Tepps, who couldn't be here this evening, is behind us, as is Mr. Keener, and Mr. Leon is in the back there. Just a few weeks ago, the Monday after the proposed bill was presented for the first time, Dr. Tepps pulled me aside and said, I want you to know something, after the very, very first time ever, students in Worcester City Schools are learning about the man for whom their city is named, and he was extremely proud of that. And above all other things that are going on in this project right now, I could not be more proud of that. And the statue only serves as that solid visual reinforcer of that educational proponent of that. I really truly think that this is, this is only one, one-time deal. I've talked with several of you, and we've talked about internal projects, and I've already led a little of you as well, and those are fantastic things. The city always has done fantastic things, in internal improvements, downtown improvements. Once this is done, it's done. It never, ever has to be done again. And the last part of the grant fundraising is perpetual upkeep in the event that somebody doesn't come to it, and that will be put aside in forever. It's an awesome thing, and I think all of us have this very, very, very unique, one-time opportunity to be a part of this. Next year, when this goes in, it will be the 310th anniversary of the birth of General Worcester for whom our city is named, and what thrills me so much is there are more and more and more people getting excited about this very man, his life and times, and what he stands for. When you start hearing that our children in the city schools are learning this, what more could you ask for? So, I could talk for a long time, as you well know. But I wish to do a little before, and thank you very, very much for your time and your solid consideration.
Thank you.
Both.
Thanks very much.
Now, I have a second individual that has signed up to speak now. My problem is you're not a citizen, or you're not a resident of the city of Worcester, and I have a rule, or we have a rule, that unless you're a resident, then you don't have the right to speak here, so. My guess is, are, you're a high school student?
A college student, sir.
College student. Are you going to college here?
In Ashland, but I spend a great deal of time in the city of Worcester.
Okay. Well, I assume you're in favor of it?
Very much so, yes.
Okay, are you a history major?
I would be, yes.
Did you go to Northwestern?
Yes, yes, I did.
You didn't have to have Bob Yumboro for anything.
For government class.
Yes.
He's a fantastic teacher.
Yeah.
And he showed me the value of having such statues as Worcester to live by as a remembrance of our great city.
He was my neighbor for 10 years, and I know your mother too, which is why I'm taking it easy on you there. This is Riley Ricknitz.
He gets to talk a lot about talking.
So, well, thank you from the West Salem area for supporting the Worcester General Statue Initiative.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. And that, that wraps up the communications from the public. We have no committee reports, unless they snuck one in in the last, since the last time that I didn't know of. That brings us to unfinished business, which has happened to dovetail into the resolution regarding the General Worcester Fund, Resolution Number 2019-54. This will be second reading, as I said, and it'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. Before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, I will ask Ms. DePaul to please read the title.
Resolution Number 2019-54, a resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to donate funds to the General David Worcester Memorial Statue Project and appropriating the necessary funds.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Mr. Ansel, two weeks ago, did, did a real good, did a real good job of bringing this information to us in the first round, and candidly, I'm going to let him wrap this up in two weeks to finalize this, but tonight, we're just having a second reading, and I just, at this point, would just open the floor to the council. Is there any questions you might have related to this? If not, then, that's all I have to say.
All right. I appreciate your presentation, and it's short, and we'll let Mr. Ansel have the final word, so. That brings us to new business. First item is Resolution 2019-55 regarding the contract for the Worcester Swimming Facilities. It'll be presented by Mr. Myers, and it's slated for three readings, although this is something we've done a number of years, so it shouldn't be anything new, so. If I'm telegraphing, then perhaps we can dispose of this tonight, it would be much appreciated, and I think Mr. Myers would appreciate it too, so. Before I get to that, to you, Mr. Myers, I will ask Ms. DePaul to read the title.
Resolution Number 2019-55, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract with the Worcester YMCA for professional administrative services related to the management and operation of the city of Worcester's swimming facilities.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. We, this is the same program we've been doing for the last number of years. I talked to Mr. Baddick this morning, and I'm going to let him speak or answer questions. He's here this evening, but you all have before you the very nicely presented and detailed attendance numbers for 2018 and 2019. You'll see overall, total attendance was down slightly in 2019. I'm going to assume that might have been due to our sketchy rain spring, we had the first few, four weeks, basically, the summer, so May was down, and then swim meets was down also. Mr. Baddick, do you know why the swim meet number was down? From year to year? I know, that's pretty specific, but...
Our three hundred meets was actually up.
Okay.
I'm going to guess, and if I'm wrong, that some of our dual, dual meets were down.
Okay, or maybe we didn't have as many, one this year for whatever reason or another, so. I am going to open this up to questions, and again, Mr. Baddick is here to answer those specific ones, if you'd like, but I'm going to ask that we move this to the third and final reading, so if you have additional questions, or if you'd like it delayed, let me know, otherwise. Does anyone on council have questions about the program? The cost is up slightly from last year's contract, it's mostly due to increase in minimum wage for the staff that we hire, so, or that the YMCA hires.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Baddick, how, how many lifeguards are employed at the Knights Field Spray Ground currently? I know last year it was kind of up for debate.
They have no lifeguards.
No, no lifeguard, okay.
They're, state law does not require that we have any lifeguards in the spray park.
Okay, so there's just an attendant.
They have one person there, they manage the facility, open it up, and in these first days, they provide that.
Okay, and then, just sort of to piggyback on Mr. Myers', I guess, observation that attendance numbers were down, should we assume that that's because of weather, or I know there were some mechanical issues with the pool, with one of the pools this year as well?
A hundred percent of our attendance is basically weather dependent, and through the third, fourth week of June, we had a ton of rain, and...
Yeah.
...rain, people aren't going to use the pool.
Understandable.
The second half of the season was very excellent.
So, when, when the pools are closed, are the lifeguards being paid, or they just get the day off and they're not paid? Is that how that works?
They get the day off.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any further questions? No? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to move this to the third and final reading this evening.
All right, a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. Mr. Myers, I look to you again.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any other comments, questions? Guess we won't see you until next year about this time, huh, Mr. Baddick?
I feel like a contract coming up.
Two or three times.
Just pulling your leg, so. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt or approve?
Cavan?
No.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Should pass.
Yes.
Yes.
It does. It's, you know, forced suspension.
Right.
All right. So, Resolution Number 2019-55 passes. This has always been a very good, I think, synergy between Worcester and another entity in providing quality service for the pools, so, thank you YMCA. That brings us to ordinance Number 2019-19. This is going to be presented by Mr. Sanders, it is slated for three readings. If you would, Ms. DePaul, please read the title.
Ordinance Number 2019-19, an ordinance amending ordinance Number 2007-28 by authorizing the mayor to transfer the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement from Liberty Market Properties LLC to Gold Star Holdings LLC.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Liberty Market Properties LLC initially had received a 100% 12-year CRA agreement to rehabilitate 146 South Market Street into residential apartments with first-floor retail space, and to create 18 full-time jobs with $120,000 in payroll. They requested permission from the city to transfer said agreement to Gold Star Holdings LLC, who owns, is the same proprietors of the City Square Steakhouse. The exemption, which expires on 12/31 of 2019, this will enable Gold Star Holdings to retain the remainder of the CRA savings, an estimated value of $5,277. Separately from the transfer request, as authorized by the ordinance 2007-28, the mayor intends to amend the job and payroll commitments from the creation of 18 full-time or equivalent jobs with a total of $120,000 annual payroll, to the retention of 24 full-time or equivalent jobs with a payroll of $798,77,000. At this point, it's a, it's a good deal for everybody, and say, we're really just allowing them to have the last year of this agreement, which at this point, it's been, it's been definitely a win-win for all parties involved. And with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I see Mr. Malley's there.
Yep. Yeah, I was going to throw them to him anyway.
You were going to throw them under the bus. One of the questions, throw them to questions or under the bus? Take your pick, right?
I have a question. Jonathan, is, the way that I read this legislation, it covers both the property at City Square Steakhouse and the building next door, is that correct, where Closed-Minded Boutique is?
No, this is specifically 146 South Market Street. The other property, 140 South Market Street, the city of Worcester has a CRA agreement with, I apologize, the name escapes me, but, but it's a separate company.
Okay.
That agreement is right now out of agreement, because the property has been sold, but that is a separate real estate holding to the one where City Square Steakhouse resides today. And City Square Steakhouse has been the project that has made the agreement that we have today excel at all of its commitments over the last decade.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I don't know where I, I must be mistaken, I thought I read that somewhere, so, thanks for the clarification.
And this relates, just again, to property tax, right?
Right. What's that? I ought to set that up here.
Is this just, the savings, this agreement is just good to the end of this year, correct?
Yes, the, the abatement will effectively end 12/31/2019. The sale took place a little less than one year ago, and when that happens, the city's agreements are with a specific company for as long as they hold a specific piece of real estate. If that company ceases to exist, or if they cease to own that real estate, effectively the abatement does not exist any longer, we're, we're left out of agreement. So, absent of approval tonight, the abatement will cease to have existed upon the sale date, which occurred in very late 2018.
We did, we did this, was it a year ago, was it Net Ops, out on 585, they were taking the building from a contractor that had a smaller abatement, but we transferred that one, didn't we?
Correct, and we performed a similar exercise for the St. Paul Hotel.
Right, so this is fairly, not common, but it happens when properties change hands?
Yes.
And, and there is no extension of that, this just to honor the original agreement?
Correct. It strictly honors the original agreement, and in light of the fact that this agreement has excelled because of the tenant, the City Square Steakhouse, and the fact that they are now affiliated with the, the new owner, that only helps to show a further investment and commitment into the community by that particular company, and so we're, we're very thankful for that, and in this instance, it's just honoring what was there. The, the abatement term does not change, so it still expires when it was scheduled to, and the, the level of abatement remains the same.
Okay, and it seems to be a stronger case, anyway, so, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Malley?
Yeah, yes.
Sorry. So, thank you to Mr. Silvestri for pointing out, I knew I read this in here somewhere, so perhaps there needs to be an amendment to the actual application. Number 11, Section B, Closed-Minded Boutique is actually mentioned as an applicant, as a retail tenant in the application.
Yes, that, that was part of the original application, part of it, that... That had-
That doesn't need changed?
The decision, the, the, this one application pertained to two separate agreements. And one of them being with Closed-Minded Boutique, one being with 146 South Market Street. So at the time that the application was made, it, it was seeking abatement, or it was seeking to have a transfer of both agreements. Since the time it was applied, we have not opted, working with the current building owner, we've not opted to move forward on a transfer for the Closed-Minded Boutique building.
I just didn't know if, if this application should be changed, or if that should be struck out, like some of the other language in, in here?
There, there would not be need to do that.
Okay.
But hindsight 2020, had we been more aware of the situation at, at the time, you know, we would have made an edit then. But sometimes, as these things go, we do not always have all those details up front.
Sure. Yeah, I won't beat a dead horse. I'm sorry, I just, I was like, I know I read that in here, so, thank you.
It gets confusing. Yes?
I, I remember reading that as well. And I guess my question would be, in the beginning, Gold Star Holdings had two tenants. That would be City Square Steakhouse and Closed-Minded Boutique. But now, because of a sale of that part of the building, is that correct?
These are two separate buildings, under two separate agreements.
Okay.
And one application was filed for both. And during due diligence, it was found that the, one building, 146 South Market Street, where City Square Steakhouse is located, was a great candidate for a transfer. The other property was, where Closed-Minded Boutique is, was, was not an ample candidate for transfer. And the proprietor of that building, which is still Gold Star Holdings, chose not to assume the abatement. They're, they're under no obligation to do so. So that means that the city of Worcester remains in an agreement with the original property owner. And that property owner remains responsible for the performance and any consequences thereof going forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong. For the historians in the council chambers, this pertains to the building formerly known as Germania Hall, correct?
The specific agreement we're talking about transferring tonight, correct, Germania Hall.
Okay. That might help clarify it for some and confuse others. Anyways, I thought I'd point that out, since we have so many people here vested in history.
I guess, not to, I will beat the dead horse. So why is the Closed-Minded Boutique, why has not that not been struck out? I mean, can you, Mr. Scavelli, provide some insight as to why we wouldn't want to remove that from this piece of, this document? Well, no, and I understand that, and that's my point. I mean, at this point, everything's saying 146 South Market, but yet, we've got an additional, additional piece in there, which at that point, then, isn't part of this. Granted, it's not specifically called out as, as an address, but yet, it's still there.
Well, it, this is the original application, and it technically still exists. It's just not in compliance, and it's not asking for transfer, so.
It's fine.
It's a separate abatement, and we would be providing, let's say if it were a transfer, there would be an entirely separate piece of legislation for that particular building.
I'm just making sure we're legally covered. And at this point, if Mr. Scavelli's happy with it, then I'm happy with it.
Well, I think the only thing that, at this point, the legislation is, is correct. And I think that the application isn't as important as the work we're doing.
Then that's, that's all I want to hear, then. Very good. So if everyone's satisfied, I'll motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Second.
Okay, a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. I thought I heard Mr. Myers second it. If you would, please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. The horse still has its whip marks on it, but does anyone have anything else to ask? Seeing none, would you please call the roll, Mr. Apollo?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-19 passes. Resolution number 2019-56 is the next item. It'll be presented by Mr. Bastancic. It is slated for three readings. And speaking of reading, would you do us the favor of reading the title, Mr. Apollo?
Resolution number 2019-56. A resolution authorizing the director of administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for resurfacing and repairing portions of North Street from Liberty Street to Spink Street, Quimby Avenue, Highland Avenue from Tatum Street to Cleveland Road, Milltown Road from Cleveland Road to Melrose Drive, and Melrose Drive 900 feet north and 400 feet south of Milltown Road, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bastancic, the floor is here, sir.
Thank you. This is the time of year when we start seeing the engineering department putting out for bid road repairs and road resurfacing projects. And this was a rather large one. The whole estimated cost for this is $1,195,000. $532,752 come from ODOT Large City Funds. And our responsibility would be a little, a little over 600,000, 62, I'm sorry, $662,248. This will, project is currently not funded, not in the budget, but it will be entered in on the 2020 budget. But the reason we want to get it out now is to, since this is such a large project, is get the best bids from the companies that will do the work. So when we see the, when we see the 2020 budget, this will be in there. Now, because it's got a number of streets in it, I want to go over them one more time so everybody knows what we're, what we're looking at. It's resurfacing and repairing pavement on North Street from Liberty to Spink.
A point of clarification there, Bill.
Pardon?
Point of clarification there. North Street runs parallel to Liberty.
Didn't Liberty curve around, though? A little bit at the end?
It starts down by the bridge that they just replaced on Liberty Street.
Oh, you're talking west end?
Mm-hmm.
Correct, correct. Yeah, down by the fair.
Okay, so that's the entire length of North Street?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Very good. Okay, okay, we're going from Quimby, we're going to Quimby Avenue, Highland Avenue from Tatum to Cleveland Road, Milltown Road from Cleveland Road to Melrose Drive, and Melrose Drive 900 feet north and 400 feet south of Milltown Road. And this, this project will mill the existing surfaces, adjust the manhole covers and water valve boxes to grade, and place new asphalt and pavement markings. And again, all the engineering will be done by the city of Worcester. That's, that's pretty cut and dried, I think. But if there are any questions, Roger's here to answer.
Other than the cost of advertising, you know, we're not expending anything, any money at the moment. We're just trying to see if we can get to some preferential bids going out this early, early in the year and kind of tie down some of these things, so.
Correct, yeah, we do, we do this, the large city project every year at this time. And I do think that we get a good price because everybody's trying to get their work lined up for next year.
And I believe you told me that if we don't use these funds for the next year, we lose them? Is that true, or?
Well, you can, you can carry-
Can you carry them over?
-a portion of them over, but we like typically use them all. And we've been choosing to use it to do resurfacing. And it's only on the major roads that we can use the large city money's on.
Thank you.
Roger, will this be, will this be bid out as one contract? Or can, can contractors bid on individual parts of it?
One contract.
Okay.
And that makes sense, because if they're bringing their equipment in, it's usually less expensive than if one does one street, another one does another street. All of a sudden, you know, in this case, it's the economy of scale.
Economy of scale, correct.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I would like to make a motion to put this in third and final.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bastancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kevin. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Bastancic.
I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kevin, who I heard first, even though that's my bad ear. Any other questions or comments? And if we get a savings from what's estimated, that means we can do more paving other ways, so. Good plan there, Mr. Kobelarsik. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2019-56 passes. Turning our attention now to ordinance number 2019-20 with regard to a vacation of an alley. This will be presented by Mr. Bastancic. It is slated for three readings. Again, Mr. Apollo, would you be so kind and read the title?
Ordinance number 2019-20. An ordinance vacating an unnamed alley running in an east-to-west direction in the city of Worcester on private property between lots 1778, 1777, 1661, and a new lot number yet to be determined.
Okay, Mr. Bastancic, take it away again.
Okay, everyone got a map that shows this alley? This is actually part of the, this whole section is owned by Worcester Growth and the old Larwell Street Trailer Park. And what they were requesting, and if you noticed that the signature of the petitions were, Joel Montgomery's on that for Worcester, you as a representative of Worcester Growth?
I think there's a piece of it in there that is owned by the city.
City, okay.
So part of it's owned by the city and part of it's owned by Worcester Growth. So there's signatures there for the city of Worcester Growth.
So all, all the contiguous property owners have signed the petition to vacate. And I, I see that, that the one that the city signed is a new lot number to be named later. Maybe we'll get a, a player to be named later, since the Browns got rid of one tonight.
Okay, yeah, this alley, if you look on, off of Columbus Avenue, there's an alley that goes in the northeast quadrant of the lot, and it goes right into another asphalt road. And then it's just right after that part there. And what they want to do is, I believe, if, once we vacated, the lot property lines go to the center line of the road, and then they extend it there four from there.
Yes.
Okay. But I understand it's really not much of an alley. Jonathan Malay called it a, what, a paper, paper alley, basically. It's really not much of anything, I guess, right now. It's just because it's on the map, we have to do something, we're going to do something with it.
Correct, and our purchase agreement Worcester Growth has with the entity that's buying it is then to combine all of it into one lot. Ultimately, it, it's going to be irrelevant, but you need to vacate that in order then to combine the rest.
I'm just curious. I, I was under the impression that Worcester Growth on the whole, what part of this, does the city actually own?
Well, we do own, we, we-
I didn't remember the city owning any of the-
We do own the alley.
Wouldn't that, yeah, we own the alley that's coming off of Columbus Avenue and dead ends.
It's the alley that we own.
Right.
So we have to give up our rights to the alley.
That alley that, currently, the section being vacated, dead ends into another property anyway, doesn't it? And then, there's a slope there, too. It's like you could go on further anyway. Plus you had all-wheel drive.
It's on paper only, yeah.
Yeah. You'll still be able to enter off of Columbus Avenue and exit on West Larwell by making a turn. So the functional part of this alley will still exist.
Have we even maintained this alley?
I don't think there's anything.
Not that piece there, no.
Just the portion that turns, makes the 90-degree turn, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other comments?
Well, I've always felt when the alley isn't being maintained, it has no use. We should get rid of it, because you never know when someone might say, hey, there's an alley here. We want to use this property, and you need to maintain your right of way, so. I would be in favor of vacating it.
I would move to adopt.
Well, I think we have to suspend.
Oh, wait, suspend, this, this is three, ah.
Yeah.
Yep. This is the three readings, okay. I move to suspend the rules.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bastancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Bastancic.
I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any other questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-20 does pass. Brings us to resolution number 2019-57. It'll be presented by Mr. Silvestri, slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Silvestri, I'll ask Mr. Apollo to please read the title.
Resolution number 2019-57. A resolution authorizing the director of administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for lime and biosolids residual management.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is here, sir.
Well, lime and biosolids residual management means lime and biosolids removal. So, we're going to manage the residue, we're going to remove it, and we have to, we have to remove those things. The last six months of 2019 are slated to involve about $122,877 worth of lime hauling. And for the biosolids, it's about $525,710. So what we want to do is bid this out so we can get a good rate in the coming year. This is a regular expense, and we want to make sure that we reach our treatment goals and keep the EPA off our backs. So I'll be looking to suspend the rules and move, move this to third and final reading this evening. With that, I move to suspend the rules.
All right, a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. Myers first, so Mr. Myers seconded. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Okay, move for adopt.
Rules are suspended. Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. And I don't think this is inherently fatal, and I'm surprised, since it's his own piece of legislation, that eagle-eyed Silvestri didn't see there's a error on the back page where it says, oh.
I did actually see that, Mr. President. Is the year incorrect?
Yes.
Yes, I did see that. I wasn't going to quibble because-
Yes, I did see that, I wasn't going to quibble because I've been told before that is not part of the official legislation.
I know, I just wanted to make sure you were on top of things, because
I wasn't.
You're the one that usually spots those types of things.
Thanks for pointing that out.
All right, good enough. So.
What's wrong?
It goes from December, or January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2019.
So some of us actually do read, read the back.
There's a secret time machine down town at the wastewater plant that we know nothing about.
We do read the fine print on the back.
Oh, that's, that's on the request, okay.
Yeah, it's on the request for agenda, it's not on the legislation.
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't have to be.
So, any other comments? I mean, this is part of the operational expenses that we have to do every year, so. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostanik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2019-57 passes. Turning to the, another similar contract will be presented by Mr. Silvestri, slated for three readings, and that's resolution number 2019-58. If you would, Ms. Apollo, please read that title.
Resolution number 2019-58, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the purchase of pebble lime for the water treatment plant.
So instead of hauling lime away, we're bringing lime into the treatment plant, so, Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, we took care of hauling away what needed to be taken away from our wastewater, and now this is a contract for pebble lime for our water facility. What that does is it maintains water quality and ensures the safe, the safety of our drinking water. It's used in the softening process, so we don't want the hardness to be in the water, so we soften the water, and it actually improves the taste of the water, so there is an amount budgeted, and we're looking to get that out for bid so that we can get the most competitive value possible. So I will be looking to suspend the rules, with that, I will go ahead and make the motion to suspend the rules.
All right, Mr. Silvestri, move to suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostanik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
The rules are suspended, I look to you again, Mr. Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for adoption.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any other questions, comments?
I have a question, since Mr. Coe is not here, I wonder, Joel, would you be able to answer for me, is the lime, the pebble lime that we're purchasing, or bidding out to purchase tonight, is that only used for our drinking water, or is that also used for wastewater treatment?
The lime is just the water.
Okay, thank you.
It's a softening process where you have an ion exchange, calcium carbonate through the water, circulation room, and the reason you have to haul the spent lime away is once that happens, it's no longer unusable, so we have to haul it out to the field, which acts as a fertilizer or a soil stabilizer on the fields.
Thank you for your clarification.
That sounds a lot like a, your profession, not a mayor's. Handy to have you in that role.
Seeing no further questions or comments, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostanik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Resolution number 2019-58 passes. Resolution number 2019-59 will be presented by Mr. Myers, is slated for three readings. Would you please read the title, Ms. Apollo?
Resolution number 2019-59, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for providing residential collection, transportation, and disposal of solid waste and recyclables.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President, although this is generally required three, we need three readings, we're going to see if we can move this to third and final this evening in order to get the advertisements out for competitive bid for the recycling and waste pickup, we'd like to get that out here yet in December, so.
I'll take that as a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri, would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Bostanik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Rules are suspended, do you have a motion for us?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, adopt, whatever euphemism we want to use, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warren. Now, you want to open another?
Mr. Bostanik?
I just have a quick question for Joel, how many companies are around here that are large enough to handle City of Worcester?
Well, we're aware of at least four, and that we have spoken to recently as we've been preparing the bid specifications.
Mr. Montgomery, I apologize, I probably should have called you earlier in the day to ask this question, I noticed that the term is for five years with a three-year renewal, I knew that's what we've done in the past. Was there any consideration, do we want to give consideration because of the volatility in the recycles market, recycling market right now, that things could change fairly significantly in that five-year period? Right now, they're having to pay to have the glass hauled away versus getting paid for it, which has changed since we entered the last agreement we're in under? Is there any reason we wouldn't want to maybe change the term?
So, we met with several companies to talk about, with three of those companies.
I apologize, I should have called you.
Yeah, to ask those specific questions, and I think our current one was three years with two one-year renewals.
Okay.
And as we've talked to a lot of businesses, in order to make it a living, level playing field, the bids themselves cost like over a million dollars for them to purchase them, so they obviously want to have time to get that back, so to allow everybody to bid, what we were hearing is they wanted a little bit longer initial term, rather than three, give us five.
Otherwise, our current provider would have an advantage, not having to invest in their containers.
Correct, so we want to make sure everybody has an equal opportunity, then we put some provisions in the, in the agreement that would allow for some adjustments if there was a major change in the recyclable market or any other market, so we've got some CPI adjustments and recyclable language in there that would allow for some adjustments if needed during that time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was recently at the Stark Tuscarus Way and Solid Waste District's policy meeting, and a lot of, a lot of volatility right now in what's going on in that industry, so.
And we spoke to Director Hell.
Did you?
To make sure we were covering all our bases on that.
Yeah, he's pretty knowledgeable, so. Very well, I just, again, should have asked you soon, but that's, that's fine, I'm glad that we did our homework on that. Does anybody else on council have any questions? I'm going to probably direct him over there, so.
I just, I just want to say I'm excited to see this come forward, I've gotten a lot of feedback from constituents, and I know there's been a number of circumstances, but I think the complaints have been founded, and, and I'm excited to see this go out the bid so that we can get the best value for the citizens. The one question I did have, the legislation supporting material was pretty vague in what, how this could affect the rates for citizens? Did you want to speak to that, or is it just completely up in the air based on?
I will say this, just looking at the market, we've got a really good deal right now, so I anticipate, you know, that there, the bids will be higher, I don't know what those will be, we have a pretty healthy fund balance in our, in our trash fund, so we could use that if we so chose to ease potentially, you know, some increases, but we do anticipate there will be some increases just because the market has been going up over the years.
So even though service has been less than satisfactory, we have enjoyed a, a very good price over the past few years.
We are below most of the municipalities based on our contract right now, I've had conversations with solid, our current contractor, as well as some of the other areas, so.
So Mr. Monet's here, because he's preparing the, the current specifications in his office, and, you know, the property maintenance function will sort of be overseeing the residential waste hole for the next contract.
Thank you.
I'm assuming the new contractor will be using the containers, or light container like we do now?
Probably different color, if another, if another, if another one got it, you know, but.
Because our current provider is entitled to recoup all those, correct? They are the property, the current provider, so, okay.
I think they have their logos on the side.
I don't think they want mine.
Okay, seeing no further questions, we're just going out the bid?
Right.
So would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bostanik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Resolution number 2019-59 passes, our last piece of legislation is ordinance 2019-21, it is going to be presented by Mr. Sanders, and it is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, I'll ask Ms. Apollo to read one last title.
Ordinance number 2019-21, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 945, collection and disposal of waste materials and recyclables of the codified ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, with respect to the collection of residential solid waste and recyclables.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we, we're being asked to authorize the paragraph number two on the first sheet of that ordinance, 2019-21, to be added, and what this allows us to do is to serve additional residential and some small commercial properties with our residential waste and recycling collection program. Presently only our family residences, duplex residential structures, and multifamily residences, which are individually metered for water usage within the city, are allowed into the program. The city has to turn away property owners of mixed-use residential, triplexes, and apartments served only with single meter, and commercial businesses operating from residential-style properties. Allowing these properties into the program at the mayor's discretion would allow the city to meet ongoing requests for service, potentially reduce truck traffic volume, and the number of trash days is visibly placed curbside on the same streets, and increase the total pool of program users, potentially helping with some cost savings. And with that, Jonathan brought this to me, so I guess if there's any specific questions, I'll just, again, pass them along to Jonathan, but it's, it seems like, as the more I've read about it, the more, as Jonathan and I talked about it, I think it's a good, it's a good opportunity for us to open it up.
I assume the rates will be variable from residential to business?
With this specific proposal, they do be the same, we do have what's called the downtown waste collection program, where very similar language, allowing entry at the discretion of the mayor or visiting, we took that process, developed standard waste unit metrics, and have that assigned. In this case, however, we're looking to onboard small rental properties, in some cases, small commercial businesses that are operating from residential-style homes, and some mixed-use residential properties that might be more characteristic in our downtown area, onto the actual residential program where the rate will be the same. Some of the caveats, and this would be subject to a journal entry, as far as our processing goes administratively, but it would be limited to one cart, so whoever is coming into the program who doesn't meet the general definition but meets the secondary definition that we're requesting this evening, they would be limited to explicitly just that single cart and no bulk waste, and there could be other provisions attached to that as well, for instance, for aesthetic concerns, we may require, may or may not require that it be screened from view, one of the things that it's brought out to the curbside, and one of the other things that we may be looking at doing, since we're talking about properties without the ability to see how many units are occupied at any given time, if somebody wishes to participate, they'll be charged a rate at all of those units regardless of whether or not they are occupied, so those are the things that we're taking a look at to safeguard and make sure that it's, it's a very equitable opportunity for people to come in, but at the same time, it's, they'll be paying, they'll be generating as much, if not less, waste than the average resident.
Good, thank you.
Jonathan, before you sit down, sorry, so assuming, assuming this passes this evening, when would it actually go into, go into practice? I mean, I'm assuming that we're going to wait until the contract is solidified with a future vendor, or immediately?
We can be able to proceed sooner, but I'll, it's more of an administrative decision there, so.
I've got a question, then, we can hold that one, should we have some of the guidelines you just referred to, though, as part of this, rather than just at our discretion, we could let, let this person do it and not let that person do it, shouldn't there be some sort of guidelines?
The reason we ask for discretion is because it does grant administration the flexibility that it needs to be able to respond quickly and make tweaks, tweaks and changes as may be needed. We do go through a formal journal entry system, so things are written down, they're documented, there is a hard written policy that guides these decisions, but similar to our downtown waste collection program, where we have just a couple sentences describing at the discretion of, that gives us the ability to make adjustments, and then when we do have additional features such as fees, for instance, if you're using our downtown waste collection program and you're a restaurant, you will pay what's considered five standard waste units, which is essentially five times what a single residence will pay. We have amended that before, but when we do so, because it's a fee, that'll show up in the annual fee schedule for council's review and questions then, and then should we have reports, say, from the public, or say, from members of council, that constituents are reporting this problem or that problem, we'd like to be able to have the flexibility to make what would hopefully be just a very minor tweak to the journal entry in order to be able to solve that issue, if it's something that we can do. And the other issue, too, that we face is that some of this is a little bit of a conversation with the waste hauler, so while we may have a business next door to us that, or on this street, for instance, that is operating from what would otherwise be a residential home, and they would qualify and welcome them into the program, we could have the same exact situation up on certain streets of the North End, and the waste hauler doesn't already go there, and so they'd have to do some rerouting in order to incorporate them, and that's not something that all waste haulers would be willing to do, and that's not something that would necessarily save our residents money, so we might disallow somebody who's not on an existing route into the program.
Okay.
A business office, that's like an insurance agency, a small office, a small accounting firm, definitely doesn't generate the waste that even a single-family household, and the waste actually is a lot cleaner because there isn't as much organic garbage.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
It seems to make sense, I agree with Mr. Sanders.
Well, with that, I'll motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bostanik, would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Bostanik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. And I'll just say, I know one of the complaints is, you know, a lot of different waste haulers at different hours, and this might help eliminate some of those, so, that's another good thing, is, you know, if they're going to be on the street, they might as well pick it up, probably more fuel-efficient and cleaner carbon footprint for the city as well. Anything else? Anything else? Seeing none, would you call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bostancik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ordnance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-one passes, that brings us to the miscellaneous portion, and we'll start with Mr. Cavan.
No, nothing to add today, thank you.
Mr. Myers?
Nothing further, thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
I neglected to thank Mr. Anderson, who has unfortunately already left, but his dedication to this project related to the General Worcester Memorial statue, he is basically taking this thing on by himself, and, and I just wanted to say thank you. That's all I-
So noted, thank you, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Silvestri.
Yes, I too wanted to mention, I appreciate not just the dedication of Mr. Jason Anderson to the General Worcester Memorial statue, as he called it a solid visual reinforcer for the knowledge of the, the man after whom our city is named, but I also wanted to thank the, everyone else who came and sat in the audience, and although not everyone spoke, I, I thought it was interesting to see those in support of the project. I will say, when I moved here in nineteen ninety-one, I, I guess I kind of looked around for some kind of a visual, and, you know, you look at the soldier standing on the monument near the square, and maybe you expect that to be General Worcester, as people have said, and you go up and read it and go, oh, no clues there as to why our city is named the City of Worcester, but, you know, you, you hear things over the years, and, and I want to thank Jason Anderson for his educational format and all the information that he provides. I do think it's a worthy project, I, I want to thank Mr. Myers really for spearheading this, and, and I do think that, you know, if there's enough interest, I think that the amount that we've specified is, is the threshold amount that's needed to, to take this project to the next level, the next step, and I guess I'm considering, you know, supporting the venture, so, thanks.
Ms. Warden?
The only thing I would like to do is remind everyone to get out and vote tomorrow if you haven't done already, and, yeah, we've, we've got a lot of really great people who are on council and in, in the administration, and some also really great candidates, so please make sure you, you use your voice and go and vote tomorrow.
And, Mr. Bostancik, we'll give you the last word there, sir.
Not much to say, no more.
All right, well, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Silvestri, is there, well, I was going to say, thank you for grinding through all these pieces of legislation, I, I'm impressed that you guys took the bull by the horns and got through it, so. I see Mr. Meyer nodding his head to second the motion to adjourn, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.